Okay. It's about two minutes after six. The zoning board of adjustment for the township of Sparta is now in session. It's May 11th, 2022. This meeting has been published as an open public's meeting and under that act, notice has been placed in the town rec, the town hall, in the newspaper of Reckitt and on our website. It's our, our normal procedure to salute the flag to start. Anybody who wishes to join us can, can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all. Thank you. Diana, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Chairman Parker. Mr. Laurie?
Here.
Mr. Josephczyk?
Here.
Mr. Sylvester?
Here.
Mr. LaRufa?
Here.
Mr. Leondi?
Here.
Mr. Finkelde?
Here.
And Chairman Parker?
Here. Okay. We have resolutions. The first resolution is Richard and Lisa Queen, number 3221.
Chairman, this is Ken Laurie. Make the motion to memorialize the Richard Lisa Queen application 32-21 decided on April 13th, 2022 for real yard and purvis coverage variances.
Is there a second?
Michael Josephczyk, I'll second.
Okay, and there's discussion. Diana, call the roll, please.
Mr. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Josephczyk?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. LaRufa?
Yes.
Mr. Leondi?
Yes.
And Chairman Parker?
Yes. Second resolution is Scott Lutowski, number 322, 35 East Shore Trail.
Chairman, this is Ken Laurie. Make the motion to memorialize Scott Lutowski, application 3-22 decided on April 13th, 2022, receive variance relief.
Second?
Leondi, I'll second.
Any discussion? Diana, call the roll, please.
Mr. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Josephczyk?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. LaRufa?
Yes.
Mr. Leondi?
Yes.
And Chairman Parker?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Keans, I'll text you when it's time to return.
Okay. See you later, everybody. Just for the record, I'm recusing myself. I'm not sure whether there's a conflict, but we decided that it was close enough and we didn't think it appropriate for anyone to raise an issue. So I'm stepping off and have not been involved in this interpretation or this case in any way whatsoever. Thank you. See you later.
Mr. Chairman, it's Ken Laurie. We just had one more resolution to be memorialized, I believe. Andrew Muller, if you want to take care of it now, I guess.
All right. Oh, Andrew Muller, yes, we'll take care of it now. One Lanza Street, number 722.
20, uh, 722. I make the motion to memorialize application number 7-22 decided on April 13th, 2022 for Andrew Muller, receive variance relief.
Is there a second?
Richard LaRufa, second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, Diana, please.
Mr. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Josephczyk?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. LaRufa?
Yes.
Mr. Leondi?
Yes.
And Chairman Parker?
Yes. I wonder how he made out Jefferson Township. Well, we'll see how that works out. Next on the agenda is an interpretation. What we have in front of us is an application from an attorney, two attorneys, who are representing members of the town that are dissenting of, uh, an application that's in front of the planning board. They're asking us to interpret whether we have a warehouse or a trucking terminal. What we're going to do on this, this is a very unique application for interpretation. Uh, it never have seen one from a group from dissenters doing this. However, we're going to work at this direction. We're going to open it up. Both, everybody on the board has gotten the letter briefs from Mr. Dash and from Mr. Goen, who is the applicant in the actual planning board. And he is the recipient or the, the person who's going to go against Mr. Dash on this interpretation. Uh, we all have that, so we don't have to go over that. Uh, we have to just listen to what they have to say extra. Mr. Dash, are you around? Mr. Dempsey, would you let Mr. Dash in, please?
Uh, yes, Dr. Parker. He's a panelist now. He can unmute his microphone.
I see him. Thank you, Mr. Dempsey.
Thank you.
Mr. Dash, have you been following?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. I have just mentioned to the board that you, where you have the application in front of us. Uh, we have gotten your, I'm going to call it letter brief, very comprehensive. I would wish you do not have to repeat anything that's in that, but I'll give you five minutes to answer, to add anything that you possibly can to it.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Parker. My name is Anand Dash. I'm here with my co-applicant and colleague Neil Clark. Dr. Parker, I do want to clarify the record. Uh, myself and Mr. Clark are actually representing ourselves in this application for interpretation. We are not representing any entity that may have interests that may be aligned with ours, but we are strictly pro se representing ourselves this evening before the zoning board of adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Dash.
Thank you. And by way of background and context, this board's jurisdiction is conferred expressly by New Jersey statute, specifically NJSA 40,55 D-70B. Our application comes before this board, as you pointed out, Dr. Parker, in connection with a pending preliminary major site plan application filed by the applicant before the planning board, known as Diamond Chip Realty LLC. At the initial planning board meeting, uh, we had, uh, there was discussion as to the nature of the use that was being proposed by the applicant before the planning board, Diamond Chip. At that hearing, initial hearing in March of this year, uh, myself, uh, had, I had raised the, uh, the argument, the position that the nature and quality of the use being sought for by the applicant, although labeled as a warehouse, when reviewed carefully against the ordinance, the amended ordinance 21-01, uh, does not fall into a permitted use category under the specifically enumerated uses of ordinance 21-01. As a result, we had placed that objection on the record. We subsequently, uh, filed an application for interpretation following the guidance of the New Jersey appellate division in the matter of DePietro versus the Township of Wayne Planning Board. We filed that application promptly, setting forth the nature of our request, which was to have this board within its powers and duties as set forth in the municipal land use law to analyze and review as a matter of legal question, the definitions set forth in the Sparta Township Comprehensive Land Use Code, uh, as well as the intended and permitted uses under the zone in question, which is, as we know, ED Development Zone. We come before this board, uh, in that context. Uh, we are here because this is a legal question, uh, predominantly asks questions of ordinance interpretation. Ask this board to analyze fundamentally whether the use proposed by Diamond Chip in its pending application before the planning board is either a warehouse as it's been labeled by the Diamond Chip or a conditional use, uh, a trucking terminal, which is not expressly permitted, but conditionally permitted under the ordinance. There was some question raised by, uh, Mr. Goen, uh, the applicant's attorney, as to whether this board has jurisdiction. I think the, uh, New Jersey statute, together with the DePietro case squarely answers the question that this board has exclusive jurisdiction over this matter. I don't think we need to waste the board's time respectfully on the nature of the jurisdiction. But we'd like to explain, we have some slides prepared after my brief introduction.
We have about a minute and 20 seconds to go.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Our, our introduction is going to be followed by slides that we're going to explain to the board uh, what the application entails. And we'd like the board to keep an open mind on the totality of the use that's being presented and not the narrow use as been labeled by the applicant. Uh, only by looking at the entirety of the use, uh, as a court would, uh, can we reach a logical, plain meaning result. With that, Dr. Parker, I'd like to turn it over to my, uh, co-applicant Neil Clark to walk the board through.
Mr. Clark, you have about 30 seconds. Cause I asked you before, we've read all your papers. We know all of this.
Well, look, Mr. Dr. Parker, we're just wondering, we're the applicant here. Uh, what is the time constraint? We'd like to, uh, present our case to the board as to the, the nature of the relief being sought. As this, as you, Dr. Parker indicated, this is a unique application. We, we'd like, um, uh, some time to adequately prepare and present our, uh, present our application. We have slides that we think would be very helpful. In fact, we have, um, we have Peter Steck here.
Okay, Mr. Dash, this is an application for an interpretation, not for you, use or anything else.
That's correct.
We have read all your paperwork and I'm going to ask our attorney if she has any comments up to this point. And then I'm going to open it up to Mr. Goen and then we'll go back to our attorney.
Okay, we have Peter Steck, uh, as an expert, Dr. Parker, here tonight.
Thank you.
So this application is coming before, and again, it's a very unique situation coming before the zoning board while pending before the planning board. And I think jurisdiction is an issue. I think the planning board has the authority and the power through the municipal land use law to, uh, make determinations on their ordinance and the board has accepted jurisdiction. It, the applicant has the burden of proof that they are a permitted use in the zone. They've applied as a warehouse. Well, the record below, although we, we don't have transcripts, um, the record below, I, I believe this was addressed at that hearing that, that, you know, the, uh, board attorney made an opinion and the board planner offered her definitions and the board has accepted jurisdiction. So I, I think a preliminary matter here is what authority does the zoning board have at this point? When the board, the planning board has accepted jurisdiction of an application, when they have the authority to, um, you know, review the meanings of their, of their ordinance. I mean, you know, you're, it's not to just quote Mr. Golden, but you know, forum shopping, the, the planning board is, is an autonomous body and they've, they've accepted jurisdiction of this matter.
Okay, our response to that is, do we have a response? Our response to that is there's no authority for what you just cited in, in, under New Jersey case law. Um, if you have authority, I'd like to know what that authority is, please. The authority for our proposition is DePietro versus the Township of Wayne Planning Board. In DePietro, the same facts as this matter arose.
I disagree. I think you have to look at the facts.
Excuse me a second. We're not here for a debate. We're just going to interpret the, what we can do. Mr. Dash, we're going to take your, your words under jurisprudence and we're going to listen to them. We've taken them under consideration. Now I want to open it up to the other attorney and then we're going to go back to our attorney again.
Okay.
Mr. Dempsey, uh, I, do you see him? Is he here? Maybe he's not here.
Um, what's the attorney's name?
Goen.
Oh, yes. I will allow him in.
I don't, I don't have him on my list, but that, you have a bigger list than I have. Okay.
He's in now.
Where is he? Oh, there he is. Steve Goen. Steve, can you unmute yourself and put yourself on, uh, camera, please?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Parker.
You're upside down. You're upside, you're sideways, sir. There you go.
How about this? Sound better? Okay. Um, thank you for, uh, for hearing us out. So, um, I'm not going to reiterate what I said in my letter brief to the board. Obviously you've read it. Um, I, I just want to point out to the board, I think in agreement with.
I'm going to give you five minutes also, so tell me when you want to start.
I already started. I won't even need five minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so in agreement with what Ms. Hubbard said, um, you know, I, I just think that this application by the objectors in this matter is basically out of order. If you, you know, I've read the Petro and I talked about the Petro at the planning board and, and I just frankly disagree that it stands for anything that the objectors say that it stands for, that it offers any kind of holding that supports their position in this at all. Um, what the appellate division said in the Petro is that if the appellants didn't like what the planning board was doing, um, in terms of considering the application that was before them, they could have filed an application for an interpretation with a board of adjustment. They didn't say when. And if you read the case law below, the law division decision, the, the, basically what they're getting at is that when the planning board decided to take jurisdiction, that was the time either to appeal the determination of the zoning officer determining that the use was permitted or file a request for an interpretation. But once the planning board has taken jurisdiction, there's plenty of case law that says the planning board has the authority to interpret, I mean, to determine, uh, the merits of the application, whether or not it complies with the ordinance. We have represented multiple times in front of the planning board that all we are asking for is approval for a warehouse. If the objectors do not like that, or if they feel like we don't put those proofs on in front of the planning board, their avenue is to appeal at the, at the, um, law division. They could file an action, leave a prerogative writ, challenge our application, challenge the planning board's decision in that matter. But to do a collateral attack to the zoning board, frankly, and to establish an entirely new record on what they believe our application is about is completely inappropriate. And frankly, it's not even supported by the language of the Petro. If, if you read to the end of the Petro, what they, what the appellate division holds is that the planning board actually did exactly what they were supposed to do, which is they considered the evidence presented before them and they determined that the use presented to them in that case was in fact permitted. And the appellate division said, that's great and we agree with them. We agree with the planning board's determination that the application that the applicant submitted into Petro is a permitted use and we're upholding the planning board's determination. We're going through the same procedure here. We have presented, we presented evidence to the planning board that what we are submitting for is a permitted use. We've represented many times that we're not seeking approval for anything other than a warehouse, which is a permitted use in the zone and that's all we're asking for. So frankly, I agree with Ms. Hubbard.
You have about 30 seconds, Mr. Goen, that's all.
I, I don't think that the zoning board has jurisdiction at this point over this matter. I know what the MLUL says. I'm, I've practiced land use law for many years. I understand what section, what 70B says, but this is not the appropriate forum to be litigating this issue. If the objectors don't like it, they can file an appeal of our site plan approval.
Okay, sir. Thank you. We'll take your statement under judicial notice. Ms. Hubbard, do you have any comment to make at this point?
Yes, we do.
I'm sorry. I thought you asked me. Um, no, I mean, I, I think that DePetro was a distinguishable case. I think that use was not permitted in the zone. We're aware how he is permitted in the zone and the applicant has the burden to establish that their use is permitted and put all the proofs on the record for site plan and, and to come before this board in the middle of a hearing, my understanding is they've had several hearings at the planning board level. Um, the, the matter has been discussed at length there, um, and it's, it's the jurisdiction lies with the planning board.
All right, thank you.
Parker, we'd like to respond to that.
Um, actually, this is not a debate, Mr. Dash. This is an interpretation.
I understand that. We'd like, we'd like the opportunity to respond so we can create a record before this board.
Are you having?
The, I'm sorry, the DePetro case instructed that.
Ms. Hubbard, uh, is it in your opinion that this is appropriate?
I mean, he can respond to my comments, but I, I really think this is, you know, it's a distinguishable case and it's not really controlling on this matter, but if he, I'll entertain him if he'd like to make a different argument on, on DePetro case. I mean, and the DePetro wasn't a permitted use. There was a question of whether it was, you know, a commercial warehouse. I, I mean, the court basically came out in the end and said the planning board had the right to make that decision and upheld it. And here we have, you know, the planners are challenging it. They applied for a warehouse. They're putting on proofs for a warehouse. A, um, the, a trucking terminal is defined in the, in the code and there, it's a conditional use. And, you know, I think at length that that was presented to the board. But if Mr. Dash would like to, you know, a minute or so to, to comment on DePetro, I'll entertain that.
The record will, will reflect that neither Ms. Hubbard nor Mr. Goen has properly distinguished DePetro. The, the language from DePetro states that if plaintiffs saw a determination as to whether the use proposed by the applicant was permitted in a B zone, they should have filed a request for interpretation with the board of adjustment and established a record in that forum. Okay, that's citing DePetro at page 169. That case arose in the context of where.
You've said that before. Can you do something else?
The language from DePetro, it needs to be followed respectfully before this board, otherwise it is reversible error. This is not the only case, uh, that stands for this proposition. There are other cases arose in the exact same fact pattern where a planning board application is pending for a site plan application. Objectors challenged the fundamental nature of the use and the applicant and the objectors have transferred the matter to the zoning board of adjustment in order to decide the nature of the use. That is what DePetro stands for. That is what the statute stands for. That is, we can certainly respect if the, uh, Diamond Chip, uh, folks want to, uh, object to the interpretation, but this board absolutely unequivocally has jurisdiction to hear this application. The failure to do so, the failure to afford us this hearing is reversible, clean error.
Thank you, Mr. Dash.
Thank you, Dr. Parker.
Ms. Ms. Hubbard, would this be an appropriate time to, um, continue with our professionals or just go out to the, uh, to the public?
Um, uh, what information are you seeking? I mean, we have Mr. Simmons, the engineer, are they? I'm sorry, because I'm conflict counsel here. I'm not sure everyone's role. Are they both, they represent both boards? Are they just, uh, consultants for this board?
They, they represent both boards.
Okay, well, anything that if they, if they feel that they need to, um, make a statement or put any proofs on the record, they will be subject to cross-examination. If you feel that their input would be helpful, then absolutely this would be the time to do it.
But my understanding, counsel, is that we have an, an issue of jurisdiction, right? And so if you're going to offer witnesses to put evidence on the record, then you've effectively exercised your jurisdiction. And so we would ask if you do that, then you allow us to continue to proceed forward, um, that you have exercised jurisdiction in this forum.
We have not exercised jurisdiction.
Right now is that the zoning board is trying to determine whether even to exercise jurisdiction.
I'm not sure what Mr. Parker would ask of the witnesses. Um, I'm not sure that either of these, uh, it, I, I don't believe that this matter is an engineering or planning issue. I think it's a matter of law. I think the jurisdiction has been established with the, with the planning board, um, but it's Mr. Parker's board. And if he feels that he needs some information from them, you know, I defer to him.
I don't think we need any information at this particular point. I just want to know, is this an appropriate time to open it up to the public? If, if we are allowed to open it up to the public.
Yes, you can open this up to the public, but again, this is a limited issue right now. We're just discussing jurisdiction.
Yes.
And if the board finds that, you know, the, that the applicant is correct and this is a proper forum, then this is a different hearing.
Well.
I just know that.
We have the board discuss whether we're going to just take the jurisdiction. Uh, I'd like to get whatever input the public has. However, I'm going to.
Very limited to procedure. Very limited.
For two minutes per person. Uh, Mr. Dempsey, is there anybody in the board outside there? Cause I can't see if anybody has their hand up or anything.
Uh, yes, Dr. Parker, there's about 60 people in the public.
Okay. Well, I just want to make this statement ahead of time. We're not going to listen to all 60 people because this is just a, this is not a determination of, of use or of environment or anything else. This is a, just a legal point of whether we are going to make a determination on whether we are going to accept the, the applicant, the applicant's point of view or the other applicant's point of view.
I started to make the distinction here that this is the applicant before the zoning board is Mr. Dash and Mr. Clark.
The Dash and the applicant, the other.
The interested party is, is represented by Mr. Goen and at the planning board, Mr. Goen represents the applicant and Mr. Dash and Mr. Clark are objectors at that matter. And that this is, if you, if you do entertain the public at this point, it is purely jurisdictional. I, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure it is a matter of law that the public is going to weigh in, in a significant way.
We don't have to go over and over again because we don't need to test testimony.
No, there's no testimony.
Dr. Parker, um, this is Catherine Sarmed. I apologize. I was a few minutes late to the hearing. Um, I just wanted to, and I, so I missed, you know, a few minutes of the original discussion, but I did have, wanted to ask, wanted to ask either our counsel a question or the, or the applicant a question. About the, about their application.
Sure.
Uh, I don't know. Is it, is it better for, uh, for me to ask our counsel, to pose it to counsel?
I would ask our counsel and then decide if you want to ask anybody else. But if you feel that you would like to participate, go right ahead.
Sure. Well, so my question is, um, based on, um, page three of the application. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure if it's a citation of a, a direct quote, because there's no quotes around it, but the sentence is in the third, third paragraph. And it says, "The, the legal question of interpretation of an ordinance must instead be decided by the zoning board of adjustment of Sparta Township." So I believe it is a statement, um, but there is a citation to DePetro after. And so my only question was, um, is the applicant, I'm just a little bit confused. Is the applicant seeking an interpretation of the zoning ordinance? Or are they seeking an interpretation of the, the application before the planning board?
So my, my, my understanding, based on the information provided, they're not questioning whether a warehouse is permitted. They're asking this board to revisit the type of use that is proposed. So where a warehouse is a permitted use and a trucking terminal is not a permitted use, they're asking the board to make that determination, not interpreting the ordinance per se to say whether a use is permitted. I think it's clear in the letter of the law, in the letter of the ordinance, that warehouses are permitted uses in the zone.
Okay. And under, under your reading of the DePetro case, was, was that an interpretation of an ordinance or an interpretation of an application?
The ordinance.
Well, they, they actually looked at what the use was proposed and made.
They were seeing if the use was permitted, correct?
Correct. Right.
Okay. This is, this is a little bit different.
This is distinguishable.
Okay.
That's why I think DePetro is not on point here. I think DePetro speaks to what the use proposed was and whether it was permitted. We're here, the proposed use as a warehouse is permitted.
Okay. Then I was just confused by the citation and the way that it was represented in the application. So I just wanted to, uh, clarify that for myself. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to be sure we're reading the same case. The, the DePetro case we're referring to is at 367 NJ Super 161, 2004. Appellate Division decision, it, it's, it's an interpretation of the ordinance in the context of a site plan application. It's on all fours with respect to this, uh, the, the present case, the present application. To not follow this again is we have followed the instruction. And I will also add, Mr. Collins, the planning board attorney even had said at the time that we should go before the zoning board and make our argument as to the nature of the use. In the meantime, we're not, we're not objecting to the continuation, but the, the, the consensus was that under the law, that we have a right to challenge the nature of the use as part of this application and construction of the ordinance and the definitions. And we can come back to the planning board with a decision. For this board not to exercise that is disregarding the applicant, the advice of the planning board attorney and is disregarding the advice of the appellate division and the statute. It's a legal question. Uh, it's, uh, we're not arguing that the applicant, Diamond Chip, excuse me, Diamond Chip has a right to argue that it's a warehouse. They absolutely have the right. We're here to argue that it's not a warehouse, but for the board not to entertain jurisdiction, I don't think there's any debate here that we were instructed by the appellate division to file this application before. We have done so, complied to the letter of the law and the spirit of the law.
Yeah. And I, I think just to add, we are asking the zoning board to construe an ordinance, to construe certain terms of the ordinance. And in that construction, they can refer to the use as proposed by the. they can refer to the use as proposed by the applicant. Now, they could also, right, if they don't want to refer to the use by the applicant, meaning the developer, Diamond Chip, what would benefit both the zoning board and probably both the planning board is for this zoning board to determine the nature and extent the uses permitted under the definition of warehouse and also the nature and extent of a use permitted as a trucking terminal and set the met and bounds of what that is. That will both guide um the zoning board in future land use applications that will come before it. It will also uh give instruction to future developers so they know when they look to see what's a permitted use, what they should check. That is a specific province of the zoning board, and that's why we asked you to take jurisdiction here.
While the planning-
You've you've made your point, sir.
You you've framed this, you you're asking this board to revisit, Mr. Dash.
Mr. Dash, one second.
This board to revisit testimony that was presented to the planning board in support of their application testimony. We're not privy to. I don't have a transcript before the planning board. So you're asking, you're gonna make an in, excuse me?
We're not asking you to revisit the testimony. We're asking you to follow the law. It says while the, this is another decision, while the planning board's decision was pending, appellate challenged whether self-storage facilities were permitted in X-zone by filing an application pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy B for interpretation of certain sections of the ordinance. We are doing exactly that.
Case is that? What case are you citing?
This is a, it's it's a Hillsborough Storage LLC versus Hillsborough Township uh zoning board of adjustment.
Who is the, who was the plaintiff in that matter? I don't have that case before me.
Uh, I'm not sure why the who the plaintiff, why that's relevant. The plaintiff was the owner and operator of self-storage facilities. There was an application for a subdivision site plan application. The context of that application, a question came up as to whether the use applied for was a permitted use during that-
The applicant raised the issue with the zoning board?
I'm sorry?
The applicant raised the issue with the zoning board or the, an objector?
And that was the guidance of the DePietro case, as we are doing here. There's no ambiguity. There's no ambiguity as to the-
Can I ask one more? My my question before, and I think you you, your reaction was that it was, this case was distinguishable. And in both cases, I think Mr. Dash has cited, the question before the zoning board was whether or not the use as it existed in the zoning ordinance is permitted or not. The applicant here has stated that there's no question that warehouse is permitted in the zone. I think that's the distinction is that, and I was confused by the application, is that they're not looking for interpretation of the ordinance. They're looking for for the zoning board to basically decide
That's not correct.
what the use is. No, please do not interrupt me. They're looking for-
Well, if you restate it, you're gonna get an interruption.
Mr. Dash, please do not interrupt her.
The 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 statement in the application clearly states interpretation of an ordinance must be decided by a zoning board. I believe that we are, that what is being asked of the zoning board tonight is not to interpret the ordinance, but to ask whether or not the use proposed before the planning board is a trucking terminal or a warehouse. And that's the differentiation I have a problem with here, is that the ordinance exists, the ordinance, we don't, we don't need to provide further explanation for for applicants in the future before the planning board. The zoning ordinance has been adopted. It is codified. And there are definitions and there are, there are development standards for those uses. I don't think this board needs to tell you, tell the applicant whether or not that the 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 application for the planning board is either a trucking terminal or warehouse. That's not under their purview. Their purview is to interpret the ordinance, whether or not a use is permitted or not. And that's the two cases are exactly, you've cited, the applicant has cited them, DePietro and the Hillsborough case are asking whether or not a use is permitted in the zone. And we know that a warehouse is permitted in the zone.
That's not what those cases stand for. Those cases stand for the construction as to the use as applied, whether they are permitted.
Can you, can you reread the statement you just read? Can you read the citation from the Hillsborough case, please?
Hillsborough, sure. If um so it says that the um, while the planning board's decision was pending, applicant challenged whether self-storage facilities were a permitted use in the I-one zone by filing an application pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy B for an interpretation of sections one eighty-eight dash ninety-seven and one eighty-eight dash one oh six B two. Just the, just a point of clarification.
Applicant or the appellant? I'm sorry. The first is-
It's 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 the, it's the challenger to the nature of the use, okay?
But this notes, the the statement you just made was they were asking whether or not self-storage was permitted in the zone.
Correct.
Are you asking whether or not warehousing is permitted in the zone?
No, it's it's not a question of reading. That's not what the, that's not what these cases say. And if you look at DePietro, what the court did in DePietro, it actually analyzed how is the 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 plaintiff, the applicant in DePietro characterized their facility, their application, their use as a self-storage facility. The objector said, you're characterizing it as a self-storage facility, but really what it is is a non-conforming prohibited commercial warehouse. Okay, and the the trial court and the appellate division were called to construct and analyze the statute and the definitions to understand what is actually being applied for. And that's why the court went into the analysis as part of the trial court as to, for example, what percent of the building is being used for storage, what percent is used for commercial. It's not a simple question of, is it permitted or not permitted? That's not what these cases stand for.
Was self-storage permitted in the zone under the DePietro case?
Was if uh self-storage wasn't expressly defined in DePietro.
Thank you.
Well, but warehouse is defined in this case. Warehouse is defined by the ordinance. Excuse me?
This is a question of interpretation that we can decide as part of this application. That's what we're-
Planning Board has jurisdiction to make that determination.
All right, let me just, let me fit in here.
The planning Board has retained jurisdiction to make to make that determination.
The planning board's attorney, Mr. Collins, has said that we should come before-
I'm not privy with Mr. Collins. I I didn't hear a statement from Mr. Collins. I I wasn't part of the the underlying matter. Um, but-
Well, I'm just not sure what law you're following respectfully. You haven't cited any guidance or instruction for what you're going to be basing your denial on on jurisdiction here. We have a statute that speaks to the jurisdiction of this board. If I can recite it for you, it's NJSA forty colon fifty-five D-
And the full-on case speaks to the fact that it is an inherent board, jurisdiction of the board to make a determination, the meaning of an ordinance, the connection with a pending application. The full-on case says that. It's um, the Jersey sixteen, NJ Super five fifty-two. It's right in in the Miss Land use law um uh administration book. You've cited to Cox. It it's right there in Cox.
You you you're loosely referring to citations without reading the cases respectfully. Okay, DePietro stands for the, and that's not how you, that's not how you provide advice respectfully. Okay, you have to look at the facts of the case, okay? And we're very confident about-
Respectfully, I disagree that the facts are on point.
Tell me the facts of the loan.
I'm I'm not arguing alone. I'm arguing to Petro.
You just cited, you cited for loan for the proposition. I've given you-
You've cited to the, you've cited to Cox as an authority in land use law. I I read your briefs.
Right, the Cox case states, uh, Mr. Cox was actually my friend and mentor, by the way. Okay?
That's wonderful. He's-
Thank you. He is a wonderful, he was a wonderful gentleman.
Yes.
His treatise uh provides expressly that if there is an objection to the nature and the characterization of the use, which there is respectfully, the proper application is before the zoning board of adjustment pursuant to a seventy-B application. We're not depriving the applicant, Diamond Chip, of the opportunity to argue before the board the nature of its interpretation. That's that's fair. That's fair game. What we're asking here is for this board to entertain jurisdiction so we can at least have a record on appeal that the board either did or didn't decide this uh matter as an interpretation as a matter of right.
Well, then we need to have the board make a determination on jurisdiction.
I'm sorry?
Then the board should make a determination on jurisdiction.
That's fine. And the jurisdiction is established by statute. It's not that, I I never thought that that would be a question. I understand there's debate over the nature of the use. This is a preliminary threshold question that that is is rudimentary.
It's a jurisdiction. Okay. Mr. Chairman?
I think, I I don't know whether we're going to get any useful information by opening it up to the public.
I I would agree with you.
This is strictly a legal problem.
I would agree with you. It's a matter of law.
But we-
I would like to open it up to the to the board and have any of the board members um comment or ask our professionals what there are, any questions that may have. Diana, uh, I'm, I'll start it off. I just want to give my interpretation. Uh, and then we'll go through the board and we'll make a decision how we're going to do this. It seems to me that the planning board has taken jurisdiction for an application for a warehouse. A warehouse is an approved use in this zone. Until they decide that this is not a warehouse, they have the the right to continue with their operation and continue doing what their planning is. If, and as historically, which has happened, if the planning board has made a decision and it's appealed to Superior Court, Superior Court makes a decision, it has to come back to the zoning board. At that time, we will address it under a D variance. But at this particular point in time, I feel that the jurisdiction in the planning board is is appropriate and that we should let the test, all the testimony that they have stay with the uh with the planning board. Now, we're going to go down the line and anybody else can add their two cents or ask our professionals what they think. This is basically just the, who's going to take this thing? That's all. Is it a warehouse or is it a, is it a, is it a uh trucking terminal? And we've had no proof that it's a trucking terminal so far.
You, just so I'm clear, Mr. Chairman Parker, I want to make sure that what you're asking us to do is to establish a record in front of the planning board to interpret an ordinance and to determine whether that interpretation of the ordinance uh is consistent with what the testimony in the planning board. Is that right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Clark. Would you say that again?
Sure, I'm I'm just trying to get some guidance here that um, we are asking for an interpretation of an ordinance. And you're asking us to, if we want that interpretation of the ordinance, the proper forum to do that is the planning board that is currently holding jurisdiction um for the uh developer. Is that right?
Ms. Hubbard, would you answer that?
I think that's correct. I think it's not, they're not asking the board, we're not asking the the planning board to interpret. We're asking the planning board to make a determination that the warehouse use that's promos, proposed is permitted and to hear the 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 presentation by the applicant and and make a decision based on what's presented. Not an interpretation of the ordinance, a di- a determination that the use is permitted in the zone.
Okay. All right, now I've opened it up to the board. Diana, would you please go down the line and ask all the board members what they feel about this?
Yes, Chairman Parker, Mr. Lowry.
Yes, Ken Laurie. But since I'm not an attorney or a lawyer, that's why we have a board attorney to tell us if we do have legal jurisdiction over this potential interpretation. I I don't think it really matters one way or the other, what I think, since again, it's a legal issue. If we should hear it or not. Simple as that. That's all I have to say. And again, I would be guided by a board attorney, what she says we have jurisdiction over or not. I don't think it matters what this board feels.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Mr. Joseph Check?
Yeah, I have nothing much to add. I I think Mr. Lowry summed it up. Thank you.
Mr. Sylvester?
I I agree with the um other board members. I don't think this should be here at the zoning board. I think the planning board has jurisdiction and I don't think this is uh the best use of the board members under the public's use of time at this point. So no further questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. LaRufa.
Uh, no further comment. I agree that with the procedures that have been discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Leondi.
No questions or comments for me. Thanks. I'm in agreement as well.
Thank you. Mr. Finkildy?
I concur with the board members.
Thank you, and Ms. Pitzer?
I'm sorry, Diana, who?
I thought Ms. Pitzer joined the meeting, Dr. Parker. But I don't see her now.
I don't see him.
Uh, she's actually in the list of attendees, but she's not a panelist right now.
Diana, I'm attempting to let her back in. I think she disconnected. Um, so give it one minute, please. She is in. She can unmute her microphone and camera.
Hi, I confer with the board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hubbard, I think at this point, the board members have pretty much uh agreed to a motion the way you have ordered it. I would like to make that motion that you write a resolution and we'll vote on it, that because the planning board has taken jurisdiction and because the the definition of a warehouse has been defined at the planning board and that the warehouse has been uh the the testimony has been given for a warehouse that until the planning board decides something else, uh, they have jurisdiction in this case.
So that's the motion that needs to be voted on then?
Yes, that's the motion. Is there a second?
This is Ken Laurie, Mr. Chairman. I second it.
Okay, um Diana, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Check?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. LaRufa?
Yes.
Mr. Leondi?
Yes.
Mr. Finkildy?
Yes.
And Chairman Parker?
Yes. Okay, that's been decided. I want to thank all the people who participated. Mr. Dash, I really appreciate your effort. Uh, Mr. Goen, thank you for your input. Catherine, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
And the Ms. Hubbard, thank you very much for helping us out in this particularly unique uh application.
You're welcome.
I really appreciated the guidance.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Um, when is your next board meeting?
Uh, we're going to have a first, the second Wednesday in June. This is May, June.
Okay, there's another hearing. Okay, all right, I will get that resolution prepared for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dave, are you going to hang around for the rest of it?
Yes.
Okay, and Catherine, I appreciate you being here. You can leave if you'd like.
Yes.
I don't think we need you for the rest of it, okay?
Thank you. All right, take care, everybody.
Thank you for your help.
Of course.
All right, next on the agenda is Brian Foley. Mr. Dempsey, would you bring the uh Mr. Foley in?
Mr. Chairman, I assume you've reached out to Mr. Keans?
Oh, I'll send him a text.
Just so you, I'll I'll stay till he he attends, but-
Uh, anyone who is here for this application of the applicant or the professionals, please raise your hand. Just a reminder, this is not uh for the public, but specifically for the applicant and for the professionals for the applicant. Hey, Dr. Parker, two individuals raised their hand. I let them into the meeting as panelists.
I can't see them. As panelists, all right.
It's Brian Foley.
Oh, it is Matt. Matt's up on top.
Hello?
I don't see you.
And I see Brian, okay. And I can't, I sent tech uh Glenn a text, but uh oh, he gave me an okay. He should be trying to come in. Oh, he gave me an okay. He should be trying to come in. I know he answered me.
He's not in yet, Dr. Parker.
Yeah, I can see that. I sent him another text. It's a little late for him to be dolphin.
I saw him pop in. There he is. Hey, Glenn. All right, have a great night.
Thank you, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Okay, now. Let's see. Me, Ken, Mike Shesky, Rich. Mike Leoni and Kelly, you're still, are you here? Kelly's not here, right? Lee is here.
Leanne, yes.
Leanne is here. Okay. Um. We have. What I'm gonna do, uh, Mr. Um. Foley. You had seven people last time on your on your application sitting here. We have. We had decided that it needed a D variance and you had to go through that rigmarole. Uh, everybody is here except Miss Kelly, but we do have seven people, so. What I'm going to do. Actually, we have eight, but we have, we only can use seven. Um. Who, let's see, oh, Mr. Finkelstein was not here. What we're going to do, and since neither you and Mr. Finkelstein were actually with the last one, we're gonna just start this all over again, so you can have a full seven-member board. Because in a D variance, you need five affirmative votes. So if. Using that as a guide, if you accept that, we'll go ahead and we'll start this case just as if we started it all over again. Is that okay with you, Mr. Keens? You're muted then.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, Matt, you can go ahead.
All right, uh, I can share screen, all right? Oh, I gotta get enabled. There we go, okay. Actually, you know what? All right, I am uh. I'll start with the site plan here. There we go. Um. So, good evening, um. Basically, I'm gonna start out by uh giving you a little bit of. Uh, parameters of the existing property. Um, let's zoom in here. All right. The. Existing house or property basically has two front yards. Front yard on Birch Parkway, which is the primary entrance to the. Residence where the driveway actually accesses the property. And an additional front yard facing East Shore Trail. Uh, the house is set back. Approximately fifty feet from the uh Birch Parkway. Um, and that is, as a result, uh, well. Partially because there's a septic system. Uh, located in the front yard, so that limits exactly how close the house can be positioned. Uh, to that street and to the septic system. Um. The property has a. Significant drop off from East Shore being the high point. Down to Birch Parkway. Um. I can show you some quick photographs of that. Uh, let's see, unshare and share. Um. So here's a view on East Shore Trail above the house. This is the house here. Um. As you can see, the roof line of the house, the eve line is. Plus or minus close to the level of the uh East Shore Trail. On the opposite side of East Shore Trail, the grade then significantly goes up higher because of its retaining wall and then continues to slope upward from that. Um. This is the view from the opposite direction, again, the house over here.
Hold on.
Sure.
Dr. Parker. We have to mark. We have to mark these and find out who uh took them and when. Exactly.
Okay, yeah, I I took them from Google. So I I would be the one who took them and I can uh. I guess we. Want to exhibit one, two, or do them all as one exhibit, um however you'd like to do that.
At the end, all of these have to be sent submitted into the planning board office.
Okay, we'll do that.
How many are there?
I believe it's. Three. Uh, six.
And I'm a little confused. You said you took them from Google Earth, so you did not physically take the pictures? Or you?
No, there are screenshots from uh uh Street View, I guess it is, from uh Street View, I guess it's Google's.
We're gonna need testimony from somebody, Dr. Parker, to. Tie this in because these aren't pictures that we actually. That were actually taken by anyone here, so maybe it would be best to either have the applicants testify to their accuracy, um. Right. However you want to do it, Tim. Okay. Um, Mr. Foley?
Yes.
You've seen these pictures.
Yes.
This a representation of your house?
Yes.
Will you swear to that?
I swear there.
You've been sworn in. I think, let me ask Glenn, could we have to swear everybody else in again?
Uh, yeah, technically, it's a new hearing, so we should, Tim.
Okay, yes, let's do that before we go any further. Uh, Mr. Foley, if you and your wife, please just raise your right hands. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, please give your name and address to the secretary, please. Thank you.
My name is Brian Foley. The address is seven Birch Parkway, Sparta, New Jersey, zero seven eight seven one.
I'm Courtney Cardos, um, seven Birch Parkway, Sparta, New Jersey, oh seven eight seven one.
Thank you. Uh, the question was, are these Google representations accurate for your house?
Yes.
Yes.
And for the surrounding area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Why need to swear it again?
Um, Matt, you will swear, I'll swear you in also because just we're gonna do it and we're gonna accept your credentials as a um, as an architect. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you?
I do.
Okay, please just give your name and address to the secretary, please.
Sure, Matthew Smetana, architect, sixty-four Sunset Lake Road, Sparta, New Jersey.
Thank you, and you've been in front of this board many times, Matt. We have your credentials. Thank you.
Yes, my license is current. Okay, um. So I'll continue with the photos. This one is basically from East Shore Trail looking directly down towards the house. Um. This is now from Birch Parkway. You can see the gradual slope of the property up towards it, and then as you uh get closer in there, basically. The grade slopes up towards the back of the house. Raising. And you can see the proximity of the adjacent houses as well. Um, and then here's the top view basically showing. Birch Parkway here and East Shore Trail here. Um, all right, so now we'll go back to. Okay. So, um. I think we covered most of the site plan. I mean, basically, there is uh existing on the property impervious coverage of. Thirty-eight point two percent. And existing building coverage of ten point six percent. Um. Good. That's like, let me, okay, let me try this differently. Okay. So I'm gonna zoom in on the site. Land first. Basically, um. We're limited in where we can expand this house, uh, based on the. Eight-foot property line setback on the one side, twelve feet on the other side, uh, required. Uh, so. Um, and the septic system along the front. These dash lines basically depict the the code limitations of how close. An interior structure can be to the septic leach field. Um, and so that's basically limiting how much we could bump in this direction. So what we've proposed is basically to expand towards East Shore Trail. Um, with a second story addition. A bump out on the left side here. Uh. For a staircase, basically to access the different levels, and then. A bump out here, which allows for uh some additional garage space. As well as uh living space up above. There is an existing deck that's in the front yard. Um, what we're proposing is basically just, there are two like skewed corners. The deck actually. Skews here and skews here, and then the existing deck wraps across in front of the garage as well. We're proposing to end the deck at the new bump out. And just basically squaring off these two corners. Um, but that does. You know, basically impact uh it being a front yard deck. Um, I guess it makes an existing non-conforming deck. Um, slightly more non-conforming. Um. Here. We can start with the. Uh, existing house. I'll just go through a couple of quick things on that. Um, so here we have the existing structure. Currently, there's the the ground level, which is. Uh, more than fifty percent exposed out of the ground. So that's as far as the ordinance is concerned, considered a story. Then we have the main level completely above ground, and then there is a upper level kind of tucked into the roof lines. Uh, but it is very limited space as far as usability. The. I'll start with the upper level. The upper level basically has this narrow space in the center that has six foot eight ceiling height. Which uh as far as code is concerned, is not. Qualified as uh legitimate living space, but it is utilized as one of the bedrooms. It is an existing three-bedroom septic. Um, ex- the up access to the upstairs has kind of low ceiling height to get just to the. Center section where you can actually stand up, so you're kind of ducking down as you go up the stairs into this lost space, which then leads to that bedroom. The. Let's go to the main level first. The main level is kind of chopped up. Um, there is a whole corner here dedicated to. How the stair works, um, basements there going down, loft stair going up, and then the intermediate stair, so. It's just a very odd layout for this, for the staircase. There is the existing one-bedroom here on that floor. And basically, you know, smaller kitchen, dining, and living space. Um, with one bathroom on that floor, and then down to the basement level. The basement currently has a ceiling height of. Six foot five and a half, which again, as far as code is concerned, is not really living space. But, uh. Is basically uh. Mostly out of ground, so it's counting as a story, even though it's. You know, challenging space to work with, basically, as far as the ceiling height is concerned. Um, there's a bathroom down there. There is actually. No third bedroom, even though it's a three-bedroom septic. Um, here's that quick deck showing the the skewed corners are basically squaring this one off and squaring this one off and limiting this whole section of deck here. Um, so from the front, we're pretty much. Exposed foundation on the rear. It's basically completely underground, except for a step down from the first floor.
Your talk in the rear is actually the East Shore Trail.
Correct, yeah, which is actually technically another.
Well, we're calling it the rear, but it's East Shore Trail. It's the other front, the front yard.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Um, so planned-wise, basically what we're proposing is, so the one addition off to the left is basically just to get a staircase, a reasonable staircase. In one area, compact, and uh bringing you up to all, basically, all three floors. One of the objectives was uh. The way the current layout of the house worked in order to go. There's no real main front entrance way. You'd basically walk around the side of the deck, climb up the deck stairs and kind of go in through the slider, or there is a side door. On the. The right-hand side, which kind of served as the, an entrance level to the first floor. So it's kind of an odd setup. We're basically proposing from the um. Birch Parkway uh front to basically have a. Front porch. So make the deck look like a front porch. I'm basically pulling the columns in or off to the edge, so it looks like they're called, you know, basically supporting the edge of a porch. We're proposing a two-level porch, ground level as well as uh main level, uh to give it more of a front entrance way. Then we have the front door then coming in at that basement level to the staircase, which will then lead you to the main floor of the house. Um. So we have the one addition here. We have a secondary addition here just to get a little bit more living space on the main level. Really, we're talking about, you know, a decent-sized kitchen, a small powder room. A large family room and a dining room on the main level with the deck. And then going upstairs, um. Basically. Uh, getting a master suite with its own bathroom. Two other bedrooms. With a secondary bath and laundry and in an office. Um, so. Getting three reasonable bedrooms versus what is currently in the house right now. Uh, two bedrooms. Um. In order to accomplish this, we are cannibalizing out the back. Four feet, which is what's triggering the. Front yard setback as far as East Shore Trail goes. Um, we are proposing to slightly reduce the impervious coverage. Um, because we can eliminate some of the walkways that were provided in the existing to wrap around the house to basically get up to the upper level. Uh, we're eliminating all of the. Impervious that was underneath the deck and making that into a deck so that it basically. The proposed plan is a net. Reduction in impervious coverage to. By point two percent to thirty-eight percent. Um, and the rear addition is built over the top of existing impervious, so it did not add any impervious. Uh, we're still conforming as far as building coverage goes at fourteen point six percent. Um. As far as aesthetics go, we're basically trying to get more of a lake. As far as aesthetics go, we're basically trying to get more of a lake style feel to the house. Adding a couple of peaks and things like that to get more interest to the curb appeal from the Birch Parkway side. You know, small balcony, things like that. But basically, as far as the basement goes, just adding a little bit extra storage space for the garage. Even that's a little bit tight, but we do have a little bit of area for, you know, bikes and things like that to go in there. So we're trying to utilize that space as much as possible to, you know, keep the property in all looking conforming with the neighborhood. And that pretty much sums up what we're looking to do. The total variances are basically the impervious coverage. Although it's a reduction is still over the allowable. The front yard setback of east shore trail and the adjustments to the deck in the front yard. It is a non-conforming property as far as the size of the property. It is undersized. The you know, the lot is six thousand four hundred ninety nine square feet versus the eight thousand or fourteen thousand, depending on how you look at the ordinance. So it's an undersized lot. And we are still conforming as far as building height is concerned. We're thirty one point nine feet where the ordinance allows up thirty five feet to the average grade. And it is a use variance as far as the number of stories are concerned. So we're addressing that in this hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Foley, do you have anything to add?
Um, I have a great job, Matt. And plans look great. We've been showing them off left and right. I hope everything goes as planned. I mean, the only thing I have to add is, you know, we have a growing family and I have two little girls and and I want them both to have their own bedroom and and kind of make our forever home.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Simmons.
Yes, sir.
Any comment on this application?
Just a couple, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, and I'm referring back to the April seventh, twenty twenty two report that I prepared. Just one thing, so it's on the record because Mr. Montana put the map on that showed the survey. It's it's just a technicality, but I wanted to point it out. On the survey map that was brought up, I believe by Mr. Poole. It does show that the house is in Byram Township. I don't believe that's correct, but again, yes, thank Robert Poole, his survey map. You'll see it just below the North Arrow has the subject property in Byram Township. That's not the case, but again, I just wanted to clarify that for the record. So there is no confusion. With regards to utilities, I agree with what Mr. Spatana said that in the front yard based on the information provided from the survey of the septic system by Kariog Engineering, it is in the front yard towards Birch Parkway. I also point out that the subject property is served with potable water from Sparta Township Water Department. I would just suggest that the board was going to act favorably on the application that the township water department and construction official approve the size of the existing water service line just to confirm whether there is or is not any need to upgrade that. And again, I understand that the septic system has been characterized as set up for three bedrooms. Again, with the proposed plans, I just suggest that the board of any approval they might consider require the county health department just to confirm the adequacy of the septic system that exists for three bedroom, given today's change in codes. I do confirm and agree that the impervious coverage is less increase than five hundred square feet. So no additional mitigation is needed for that. And finally, in addition to all the approvals that I listed in my report that I recommend be conditions of any approval that the board may consider that upon final construction and as built plan be prepared to verify all the variances and the construction of the proposed expanded dwelling. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Yes, sir.
So Matt, basically, you're going to accept, will you will you accept all of Mr. Simmons's requirements?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Let's see. I'd like to open it up to the board and if the board has any questions, we'll open it up to the public, then come back to the board. Mister Diana, would you please go down the roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Parker, Mr. Laurie.
Yes, Matt, this is Ken Laurie, the deck in the front yard variance. That's pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming condition.
That's correct. Yes, it is an existing non-conforming deck. It's just we're squaring off the corners. So we're I guess enlarging that non-conformity.
So the the three variants who really needs the front yard variance, the purpose coverage and the amount of stories, correct?
Uh, that's correct. And the deck in the front yard is technically another, so.
But it's a pre-existing, so it, I just wanted to.
Ending it, Ken.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Joseph Check?
No questions.
Mr. Sylvester?
Sorry, I was on mute. No questions.
Mr. LaRufa?
No questions.
Mr. Leondi?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Finkelby?
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Peters?
No questions. Thank you.
And Chairman Parker?
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Mr. Dempsey, is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard in this matter?
Not currently anyone in the public who wishes to be heard on this application. Please raise your hand now. Chairman Parker, no one has raised their hand. I don't know if you want to give them a thirty seconds or so.
Yeah, we'll give them thirty seconds. My watch is getting beaten tonight. Okay. We're going to close it to the public and bring it back to the board. If the board members don't have any other questions, the chair will accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ken Laurie and I make the motion of our board attorney prepare resolution approving the de-barrings application six dash twenty two block three zero two two lot eleven, Brian Foley. To add an upper level, construct condition, the existing house and repair the deck with the front yard variance eleven point five feet, purpose coverage variance thirteen percent. Number of stories, one story and the deck in the front yard eleven point two one feet. The conditions, the water department approved the size of the water lines. County Health Department confirmed the septic system for the three bedroom home. And as built plans have decided prepared by New Jersey Lance Layer upon completion, according to all plans and testimony submitted tonight.
Okay, is there a second?
It's Leondi, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Under discussion, Mr. Simmons, do we cover everything that was in your report or we can just take your whole report and put it in?
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, put the whole report in.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Larry, would you accept that as a condition that they accept all of Mr. Simmons's report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leonie, would you second that?
Seconded, yes.
Okay. There's no other discussion, Diana. Let me see, any other discussion? Okay, okay, Diana, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Check?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. LaRufa?
Yes.
Mr. Leondi?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelby?
Yes.
And Chairman Parker?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Foley, your application has been approved.
Thank you guys so much.
Mr. Keans, I think this could be a good one to let them do it tonight. What do you think?
I think so. We we lost a little bit of time. It's getting near the witching season.
Yes.
They want to move forward.
Uh, Mr. Foley, if you would like to wave your right to a written resolution, you'll get one eventually. We'll approve it tonight and you can start your applications tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, also moved. Is there a second?
This is kind of Laurie, I second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favors, just say aye. Anybody who was against, say nay. Okay, that saves a little time. Good luck, Mr. Foley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good night, Matt.
Good day, good night.
Night. Next on the list is Trevor Bradley and Samantha Solo Stanton, number eight twenty two twenty four North Shore Trail. There's anybody in that in the audience that is with that application, please raise your hand. So Mr. Dempsey can move you in. Okay. I see Mr. Bradley. Mr. Bradley, do you have an attorney or anybody or anybody with you?
I have my architect and engineer with me.
And what's your architect's name?
Cindy.
Oh, there we is. She's up on the corner there. Okay, Cindy. Do you have anybody else that you wish to testify with in this matter?
Well, Tom Graham also is here, but no, just myself.
Oh, there he is. He's up there. Tom, you're in as an engineer? Fine. Mr. Bradley, can you, are you gonna put your video on?
Sorry, I can do that.
Okay. There you go. Mr. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Graham and Cindy, would you all raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in this matter?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bradley, give your name and address, please, to the secretary.
Trevor Bradley, twenty four North Shore Trail, Sparta, New Jersey, oh seven eight seven one.
Thank you. Mr. Graham, you're going to be as an engineer, as a professional engineer. Would you please give your name and address to the Board Secretary, please?
Thomas Graham, G R A H A M. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Dykstra Walker Design Group, twenty one Bowling Green Parkway, Lake Capcon, New Jersey.
Mr. Graham's credentials are well known to this board. We accept him as a professional engineer.
Thank you.
Miss Miss Bonner Lay, would you just give your name and address to the secretary, please?
Cindy Bonner Lay, six Squire Hill Road, Long Valley, New Jersey, zero seven eight five three. I've been licensed since two thousand. I've appeared before this board before. However, it was in two thousand and seventeen as a licensed architect.
Well, then if it's been that long, we have to see if you had your shots or anything left. So you come back to Sussex County.
Yeah. Yeah, my license is still in good standing.
Okay, thank you. Unless anybody on the board has a problem, we'll accept Miss Lay's credentials as an architect. Okay, Mr. Bradley, who's going to present your case?
I guess I'll start just saying, been in Sparta for seven years, bought this house two years ago with my fiance. We love the location and we want to make this for our forever home, but it just needs to be brought up to more today's standards and we're not gonna, we're not increasing the bedrooms or anything. But we definitely, we want to stay in this area, in this this house. And yeah, we need some variances, I guess, to add the addition that we're looking forward for for that. So yeah, that's really it. I'm gonna hand it over to my architect and engineer at this point unless the board has any questions for me.
Mr. Graham, it's on your.
I believe Ms. Bonner Lay is going to.
Oh, she's gonna start first.
Yeah, I'm gonna go first and then I'm gonna pass it off to Mr. Graham. So I'm gonna actually share my screen here. Um, what's it doing? Let's see, hold on.
While she's doing that, could while she's doing that, could we just confirm what variances are in fact needed? David called out five and I just want to make sure between Tom and Cindy that they agree that they're the five that were called out.
Yep, I'm gonna go through the list of variances, but I can skip to that.
Cindy, just tell me, do you do you agree with what was called out in Dave's May third, twenty twenty two report?
So we have a right side yard setback, a sorry, a left side yard setback, a lot coverage, a variance for retaining wall. And
The two pre-existing.
The pre-existing non-conforming uses.
The Dave's list.
Okay, I just want to make sure because when when we look, when you look at the application, we have an internal report that was slightly different and I thought that Dave picked up the extra one. I just wanted to make sure you guys agreed with it. That's thanks, Tom, and thanks, Cindy.
So can you guys see, I'm I'm actually on a, I normally do this on an eye device and I'm new and improved in doing this on my computer now. So can you actually see my screen here?
Yes, we can see it.
Yeah, okay, so you should have some CAD drawings here. So these are the same drawings that you have in front of you. They're obviously just in the CAD version. So this happens to be sheet two. So I'm just going to briefly walk you through the project. So this is our first floor plan. So currently there's a dining room, sunroom, kitchen, living room and office. And then a bedroom and laundry room in this area, which we will be manipulating. So we propose to basically add an entrance way, add a bedroom, relocate the bathroom and laundry area and then expand the garage, which is right now is just sort of like a shed on the front of the house and and make it an actual proper garage. And we'll be adding a deck area off of the back. The basement, the full basement is basically just limited to the back of the house here and is really just a utility basement. You access it from the outside of the house, not from the inside. The rest of it is crawl space and the new additions will be over crawl space and or slab for the garage portion. So this is sheet three. Again, same as the drawings that you have already in front of you. So the home is and will remain one story. Trevor and Samantha really wanted to retain the lake cottage feel of the home. We did look at into into expanding upwards, adding a second floor, but they really felt it changed the character of the home too drastically. The bedroom and entry addition are on the left. The entryway addition is in the middle and the garage addition is here on the right. As you can see, we're matching and enhancing the existing cottage feel of the home. We'll have all new siding with stucco and bean details, which are prevalent on the lake and we believe will help enhance the lake character of the home. The front entrance roof will have some standing seam metal roofing accents on it and a stone border across the front to kind of tie in some of the existing stone accents that are already on the house. This is the rear elevation, which doesn't really change all that much. Really, the only difference is is we are adding some dormers to the existing roof line. They are just decorative. I know that was one of the questions in the report. It's not living space up there. Though there is some, there is like a loft, like a ladder that goes up to a loft and there's like a little sort of sleeping loft up there, but it's really not living space. So it's really more for storage and aesthetics purposes. So this is a side elevation. So basically, this is the existing portion here and we are adding a new bedroom and then you can kind of see the garage addition. um, in the distance. And then this is the other side, um, elevation. Again, this is basically the existing and this is sort of expanding the garage area and again, adding that decorative, um, dormer. Um, so as mentioned, we do need a couple of variances. Let me see if I can get rid of this. How do I go back to? Oops, there we go. Oops. Sorry, I'm not very good at this. Okay, so this is our site plan, um, sheet one, which was actually, um, prepared by Dykstra Walker. Um, so first, it should be noted that our site is undersized for the zone at eleven thousand three hundred and ninety square feet versus the fourteen thousand square feet required. And it's also narrower, um, than the requirement at sixty point eight feet versus the eighty feet required, which makes it hard to conform to the zoning requirements and is considered a hardship. Our front yard is gracious at fifty point seven feet, uh, proposed, whereas thirty-five feet is required. And our rear yard is also very gracious, being twice the, um, required size at seventy-three point seven feet, whereas thirty-five feet is required. Our building height is obviously conforming at fourteen point one feet, being as we're only one story, whereas thirty-five feet is allowed. Our building coverage is also below the required at fourteen point eight percent, whereas eighteen percent is allowed. Again, reinforcing that the home is, uh, not oversized, um, for the lot. Our side yard on this side is sixteen point six feet versus the eight feet required. This is a large setback. It's twice the the required and it basically reiterates the hardship that the existing home is just not centered on the property, um, and was built, you know, sort of too far to the, to this size. Um, and even with an undersized lot, um, our side yard combined is conforming at twenty-three point three feet ver- versus, uh, twenty feet required. Um, I believe this, this shows that the lot can handle, um, the home and the addition. It's just unfortunately placed on the lot um, as to require setback variances. And I'm guessing this is probably due to this is existing rock outcropping, um, that's on the side. So I imagine the home was sort of pushed to this side of the property because of the, the giant rock. Um, so now onto the variances, um, side yard or left side yard requires a variance for six point seven feet versus six point nine feet existing and eight feet required. Um, this is basically an existing non-conformance. Uh, it's only slightly smaller than the, uh, existing because the house is not quite parallel, uh, to the side property line. We're merely matching the existing sideline of the house. Um, again, it should be noted that all of our additions are one story and therefore we do not believe we're blocking the light air view or any neighboring properties. Um, it should also be noted that the, um, neighbor's home, this is actually their driveway side. Um, so we don't believe we're interfering with their, uh, privacy. And the addition on this side, we actually did sort of small, high-up windows again to sort of not interfere um, with their privacy. And I'm just gonna go to, this actually needs to be marked as an, um, as an exhibit. This is a, uh, Google, a Google Earth, you know, view, um, showing our property and the sort of neighboring properties. And what what this is really just depicting is that you can see it's it's really well. I mean, this is obviously a, a winter shot because you can see there's sort of no leaves on
It's not up on the screen, Cindy.
It's not?
No.
Oh.
You still have your drawings up on my screen anyway.
Oh, dear. I've been pointing to stuff this whole time. Um, hmm. Let me see. If I stop, she, where's my stop share? Let's try this. Let's do. Let's see if I can. There we go. Is it showing now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, sorry, this is, uh, the Google view and like I said, you can kind of see this is a winter shot and, uh, even so, um, you can see that it's a very well vegetated, uh, around, uh, Trevor's, um, house um, with evergreen and deciduous trees. It really, uh, creates a nice privacy, uh, barrier between his house, um, and the neighboring, uh, house. Um, actually, I'm gonna go back now to, because I actually had the site plan up before and where is that gone? It's funny because it's not showing me what you're seeing, so I can't actually tell what you're seeing.
It looks like a nice sunset with a little person in a bubble.
Oh, that's not good.
It's a pretty, pretty photo, though.
Okay, I don't know why it won't let me bring up the site plan. Uh,
Well, we will have the site plan if you can describe it.
Yes, so, um, so we'll just stop sharing for a second then. Okay. Um, so our lot coverage, uh, is existing non-conforming at forty-two point one percent, whereas twenty-five, uh, percent is allowed. However, it should be noted that we are actually reducing our lot coverage to thirty-nine point nine percent with our proposals. While this sounds like a high percentage and a large deviation, it is mainly due to the slope of the yard and the driveway area required to safely be able to park and maneuver, uh, a car on this property. As mentioned previously, our building coverage is below the out allowable. So again, I don't think we're overbuilding, um, for the lot. And while there's a lot of pavement in the front, we're actually reducing the pavement areas. Um, in addition, these pavement areas, um, are basically creating the ability to park and maneuver cars so that nobody needs to reverse onto North Shore Trail, which obviously would be a safety issue. Uh, we're also removing an existing, uh, driveway variance, whereas point eight feet is existing and seven point five feet is proposed and five feet is required. Um, there is a variance needed for retaining wall, which I'm gonna pass off to, uh, uh, Mr. Graham in a few minutes. Um, so he'll speak to that in more detail, but, uh, basically, it's a variance for zero foot setback. It's an existing, uh, retaining wall, which we're just manipulating uh, because of the additions and five feet is, uh, required. Uh, we believe we have the hardship of an undersized, narrow lot with existing non-conforming lot coverage, side yard setback and retaining wall setback conditions. In most cases, we're merely matching or actually improving, um, the variance conditions. In addition, as an added bonus, uh, we will be removing the driveway setback variance condition. We also believe that it con- uh, conforms to a C-two variance, no negative criteria. Uh, given our reduction of lot coverage and removal of driveway variance, we, uh, believe we're actually improving the, uh, existing lot conditions. Uh, we believe our proposal creates no negative effects on ours or neighboring properties. Again, our addition is in one story in nature. It doesn't block the light air view of any neighboring properties. Drainage patterns will remain, uh, with the existing swales and underground drainage being modified to accommodate the new additions, which again, I'll have Mr. Graham elaborate on. So in conclusion, we believe our modest additions are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, enhancing the current home and continuing the lake cottage flavor. We've received the Lake Association's approval, so, uh, solidifying our continuity with the neighborhood. So for all of these reasons, uh, we've mentioned, we hope the board, uh, looks favorably upon our application. If there's no questions for me, I'm gonna pass it off to Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, should I start or?
Yes, you can start, Mr. Graham.
I I didn't know if you wanted to pull the board for, uh,
No, we'll do that at the end.
Okay. I'm gonna, uh, screen share here, um, putting up our, uh, site plan. So, uh, as, uh, the architect has, uh, she's done a really great job of describing the, uh, proposed project. Um, regarding the, uh, retaining wall, well, let me just start. We're here today for block five zero zero two, lot twenty-one, more commonly known as twenty-four North Shore Trail. It's a generally rectangular in shape, sixty feet wide by about a hundred and eighty feet deep. It's located in the R-three zone in the Lake Mohawk section of town, uh, has frontage on to the north, uh, to the north on North Shore Trail, has lake frontage to the south. Topographically, the lot slopes from north to south or from the road to the lake. There is a elevation change of about eight thirty-four at the road to eight twelve down by the lake, which is approximately a twelve percent slope across the property. Currently, the lot supports an existing single-family dwelling, uh, paved driveway. It's, uh, the site is on town water and on an existing septic system. We recently, uh, got the town to mark out the water system and we will show that on a subsequent revision to the plan. Also, we have reached out to the Sussex County Health Department to provide us, uh, position on the adequacy of the, uh, existing septic system. Uh, the applicant is proposing to increase the building as described by the architect. Um, the footprint's really growing on the roadside over existing pavement or, uh, walkways. Uh, we're also adding a deck on the lakeside. And in addition, Mr. Bradley's proposing a dock to be constructed in in the water. Uh, the majority of the work is over existing impervious surfaces and the net result is a big decrease in the impervious surfaces on the lot from forty-two point one percent to thirty-nine point nine percent. So the retaining wall that we were talking about for the variance is located along the easterly property line and it runs up and then to the driveway. Uh, because of the proposed addition that we're doing, we need to reconfigure the wall um, so that we have room to have a pedestrian or or homeowner access around the side of the property and that's on the side where we're really, uh, up against the property line and up against the, uh, existing, uh, drainage swell that runs along the easterly property line. So that retaining wall is just there to help us grade the area out to provide safe access around the property. And it is basically replacing an existing wall for the most part, um, so that the variance is really in existing condition and due to the topography and the location of the existing dwelling, which cannot be relocated on the, on the site. Um, we did get Mr. Simmons's report. Uh, we take no exception, uh, to any of the items in his report. He did reference a pump house, which is located in the rear of the lot near the lake. Uh, to the best of, um, Mr. Bradley's, uh, knowledge, that is a non-functioning pump house, a remnant from some prior uh, use of the property. And the, the site is on town water.
Is that gonna be removed?
I I accept to Mr. Bradley, it's kind of a quasi-historical, fits in with the character of the original use of the lake. Um, I think as long as it's not in disrepair, it it can stay as a feature of the property. Um, it is not used to draw water, uh, by any, uh, means. But if the board wanted it to be removed, I
Just an ornamental operation?
It's, I'm sorry, sir.
Just an ornamental operation?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
The, uh, dock, uh, we did get an approval letter from, uh, Lake Mohawk. In fact, the entire project did get that, uh, approval or, um, from the Lake Mohawk, uh, commission. Um, again, like we talked about the water and the sanitary sewer or septic rather, aerial utilities, uh, here, the, the site is, uh, serviced by an electric line, which traverses across the neighboring property. Um, we have, uh, reached out to the homeowner, uh, who, this line's been attached to the house for as long as anybody can remember. She has no issue with it remaining as such according to, uh, my conversations with Mr. Bradley. But we also have reached out to JCP and L to inquire about if they have an easement, which we were not able to locate as part of the survey, or to relocate the, uh, the, the line to maybe a new pole across the street. So we're still investigating how we're gonna handle it, but I believe that if we just left it the same, we could provide, uh, some documentation from the neighbor that, uh, it can traverse their property without, uh, any of, anything being done to change that. Similar, in a similar situation, the existing concrete swell, swell along the easterly property line kind of, uh, starts straddling the property line, then goes off onto the adjacent neighbor's property. Then it comes back onto our property. The swell terminates in a pipe, which then takes the, the runoff to the lake. Um, our proposed application is we're going to reduce the impervious surfaces and we're gonna reduce the overall, um, surface runoff from the property. Uh, and again, this existing concrete swell has functioned for many years and it will continue to function, uh, to carry the water from the front of the property to the rear of the property. There's another swell along the westerly side of the house. The, uh, proposed addition and trench drain at the, uh, garage will be tied into that swell and will be carried down along the side to a pipe to another swell, eventually making its way to the lake. Uh, we do have a trench drain in front of the driveway because the roadway is higher than than the house and so we're trying to stop any water from entering the garage and then it will be collected and again, taken to the swell and taken around the house. Uh, we are reducing the overall impervious coverage of the property, so we are exempt from the Sparta Township stormwater ordinance. Um, Mr. Simmons has asked for a couple of, uh, construction details, which we will provide to him specifically for the trench drain, the retaining wall and the concrete walkway. Um, Mr. Simmons has, uh, listed a number of approvals and item number eight of his report. Uh, we concur with, uh, all of them except, A, um, our proposed disturbance limit is less than five thousand square feet, so I don't think that's going to trigger the Upper Delaware Conservation District, uh, permit. Um, and he's asked that an as-built survey uh, of the site be prepared upon completion of the project and, uh, we have no problem with that. Uh, regarding the other permits, uh, as you're aware, the property is on Lake Mohawk. It's within the riparian zone of Lake Mohawk. All of the improvements, uh, generally fall under permits by rule. The proposed building addition, uh, will require a permit by certification, but I believe we will have no problem in getting those permits to allow for the construction of this project. Uh, unless, uh, the board has anything else, Mr. Chairman, that's my presentation.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bradley, is that the end of your presentation?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Mr. Simmons? Um, would you like to make any comments?
Uh, yes, just a couple, Mr. Chairman, and again, referring to my report of May third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, between the architect and Mr. Graham, they basically covered, uh, the items in my report. I just wanted the board to realize that any approval they might consider, uh, probably the most challenging, one of the most challenging things is the drainage around the proposed house and the additions. And I say challenging in quotes, but I was out to the site. I noticed, for example, by the existing garage, they've got a lot of concrete swales and what have you going into four-inch clay pipes. And even the one on the easterly side of the existing garage, it actually slopes towards, uh, North Shore Trail, uh, and gets around the garage that way. So when they do add the additions on, they're gonna have to be careful with the leader pipes and how they discharge them into the swales, just to make sure everything continues to function and they don't end up trapping any water in the, adjacent to the proposed additions or any of the improvements. But other than that, I think everything else has been covered by the applicant's professionals.
Okay, would that, those, um, concerns be taken care of with the, um, a pre-as-built?
I would suggest that
Which, which way would be the best way to handle, uh, that, that particular problem?
I think, uh, since it's going to be under the jurisdiction, if the board approves it of the township construction official, I would recommend that the drainage on-site that I just described be subject to the review and approval of the township construction official because he'll be out there, uh, with the construction of the addition anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Parker, I got one question, if I could, just before you go to the board. I'm a little is it right, Tim?
Yeah, I'm just, just trying to see who was talking, that's all.
It's Glenn, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't catch your voice right away, Glenn. And I'm still looking at the site plan here.
I just have a question between, uh, between, uh, the two professionals. Is there a minimum side yard setback for the wall of zero or one foot, Tom?
It would be zero, Glenn, right, right here. It just out, for our side, the outside part of the wall just touches the, uh, the property line.
Okay, and you don't need any kind of easement or anything from the adjoining property owner?
No, because of all the work.
Right, but?
No, no, sir. All the work can be accomplished on our side of the line.
Okay, so it's a zero, that's all. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, Diana, before I open it up to the public, would you open it up to the board, please, and let me have any comments that the board has? Uh, I will wait till, at the end. Go ahead.
Mr. Laurie?
No questions.
Mr. Joseph Chek?
No questions.
Mr. Sylvester?
No questions.
Mr. LaRufa?
No questions.
Mr. Leondi?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finkildy?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pitzer?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and Chairman Parker?
No questions at this time. I'm gonna close it to the board momentarily and open it up to the public. Uh, Mr. Dempsey, is there anybody in the public that has their hands written, uh, raised for this application?
Uh, not, not currently, Dr. Parker. Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Please raise your hand now. It doesn't look like we have any interested parties.
Okay, you have any disinterested parties?
Oh, I'm sure.
Okay, we're gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the board. Uh, does the board, any Uh does the board, any board member have any questions at this point? If not, the chair will accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ken Laurie, I made the motion, have our board attorney prepare a resolution. Proving application eight dash twenty-two, block five zero zero two, lot twenty-one. Trevor Bradley, Samantha Solana Stratton. Construct an addition with site improvements. The side yard variance one point three feet. Impervious coverage variance fourteen point nine percent. Minimum setback from property line retaining wall variance of four feet. With the conditions as built plans be prepared, provided upon completion. And also the drainage plans on-site be reviewed and confirmed with our construction department. Mister uh Mister Chairman and Mr. Simmons.
I was just gonna say, didn't we just? I don't want, who's talking?
Um, this is Ken, uh Ken Laurie.
Okay, Ken, I think that they changed it from one foot to zero feet, so I think.
You're right, you're right.
Okay.
I believe he may have misspoken the side yard setback unless I just heard it wrong. I think he's he said a different number, it should be six point seven.
I'm going actually by the bearings itself to one point three feet.
Oh, I see, sorry.
Yeah, the difference, yeah.
You gotta watch the numbers, Cindy.
You're doing math, it's too late to do math.
Now, Mr. Chairman, and a question for David Simmons, should we have the county health department uh confirm the capacity of existing septic system or?
Yes, I would recommend that.
We we already made application to the Sussex County Health Department for that uh confirmation of the septic system.
Okay, according to all plans and testimony submitted uh tonight.
Is there a second?
Leonie, I'll second.
Hey, Diana, would you please call the roll if there's no discussion?
Mr. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Chek?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Mr. LaRufa?
Yes.
Mr. Leondi?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelby?
Yes.
And Chairman Parker?
Yes. Um, Mr. Keans, I think with this case, we can also wave our, let ask him to waive his rights, is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh Mr. Bradley, if you'd like to waive your right to a written resolution, you'll get one eventually. Um, you can start applying for your permits tomorrow if we pass it tonight. I would say yes.
Sure.
Dr. Parker, just before, just before you go any further, did. Did they confirm, there's a something from Phil Spaulding that I just noticed.
Dave asked them about the water line.
Yeah, we uh we recently had the water line uh marked out, Glenn.
Okay, that's fine, thanks, Tom.
Show up on our next uh.
Sorry, thanks, bud.
Yep.
And I did see it marked out in the field during my inspection.
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bradley, did you waive your rights?
Uh, sure.
Okay, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I second it, Mr. Chairman, Ken Laurie.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody say, anybody again say nay? Mr. Bradley, it looks like you've passed, you've gotten your uh application passed. Uh wish you all the luck in the world, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if he didn't get it approved, he might not be getting married on Saturday.
Well, if you had put that ahead of time, we might have done the Greg this out a little bit more.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, most of the logic for that.
That's the one that's subject to a prenup or anything, dude. Good luck.
Would you please uh look and see if the next applicant is in the audience, please? It's Matthew Martino and Alexandra Russo Martino. That's number eleven twenty-two, it's two eighty West Shore Trail. So we're gonna just switch over, we have a two-second break here.
Anyone in the audience who's here for that application or they're professionals, please raise your hand now so you can be led into the meeting.
It's just the two of us for tonight.
Okay, that's great. So, Dr. Parker, we are ready to go.
Okay. There's Mr. Martino and Ms. Martino, uh do you have any professionals with you?
Uh, I am uh all the homeowner and the architect as well, um so I'll be representing both aspects of that. Um I'm also keyed into the site design, we have worked with Dykstra Walker, but um based on the uh review letter. Uh from Mr. Simmons, we're we're essentially willing to accept basically everything in the letter. Um so I don't know that there's much for my engineer to testify to at this uh at this time.
Okay, sir, well, would you and your wife please raise your right hand, is she gonna give testimony, by the way?
Uh, are you gonna?
I don't think so.
You could put it up just in case?
Okay.
Just in case, okay, cuz I've done it every now and then they do, you do jump in.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you uh please give your name and addresses to the secretary, please?
Okay, I'm Matthew Martino, I currently reside at twenty-two Notch Road in Newfoundland, New Jersey. Uh we're not living in the house yet, that is zero seven four three five.
And I'm Alessandra Russo Martino, I also live at twenty-two Notch Road in Newfoundland, New Jersey.
Thank you. Um. Matthew, as you may have picked up on, what we're gonna do is let you present your whole case.
Mm-hmm.
Then we're going to go back to our professionals and then go ahead with that, okay? Now, I'm looking at your application and I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. The only variance that you asked for on your application was lot size, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, I am going to ask our. Our attorney at this point, that's a pre-existing non-conforming problem.
Yes, it is. There's not much I could do about that, there's not other land, it is um a conforming size as it is over eight thousand square feet, so it's larger than the minimum size to build. Um but um in general, uh we have an existing house that's in non-conformance and with all the work we wanna do, we wanna bring it into. One hundred percent conformance with zoning, with the exception of the lot size that we cannot make larger.
Okay, sir, go ahead, put your case.
Well, hold on, hold on, Dr. Parker, I think it's, I think it's a little bit, the chairman asked the right question.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know how it got this far, but I'm sorry.
I I I'm gonna suggest to him as if I was sitting next to him as his counsel. And as Mr. Simmons was sitting next to you as your engineer. That in fact, you took a pretty conservative, are you purchasing this or do you own it and now you're gonna refurbish it?
We we own it, um we bought it last June and I could give you the backstory if you'd like.
Nope, we don't, we don't need that, but here's where I'm going. What you've done is you've applied for a variance to basically put the entire parcel into conformance.
Yes, sir.
What's out there, what that enables him to do, and I'm saying this more for him than for the board, I think they're aware of this. Is that by getting this variance, you take away any pre-existing non-conforming items on it. So your lot then becomes a conforming parcel, assuming that the board grants you the variance. If in fact, you should have Hurricane Chuck or whatever come through.
Okay.
And destroy the house. You would be able to rebuild the structure on the same footprint as it is. Without seeking any additional variance relief or any other relief, you have to get building permits, but you know that as an architect. Uh so if you didn't do that, then you have a pre-existing non-conforming deal. If something, if you have a fire, then you would have to start from scratch and you would need all those variances. So if in fact, that's the reason you did it, good for you. If it wasn't the reason, if it wasn't the reason, good for you too, because that's that's the belt and suspenders.
Thank you, we're, you know, I I I'm a, I've been doing this for fifteen years as a designer, I worked in several different typologies. And um design constraints are are actually fun to play with and I think we actually came out with a really great house here. The and the other fact of the matter is the existing, and I'm happy to testify to all this, is in such rough shape that. Um modifying it would would keep the house in non-conformance, but it would also yield uh still a deficient house. In respect to building envelope and quality of foundation and drainage and many other aspects as well.
Matt, you just test, Matt, you just finished your testimony, I think.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief as you guys want me to, I I have no problem, if you need uh some background and wanna go over the pictures, I'm happy to share all that as well.
Ken, you do what you want with this one.
I think this is pretty well self-explanatory. Um I think a motion that would encompass uh the variance for the lot size. And that uh for the testimony in the plan submitted and all of Mr. Simmons' report should do it.
Okay, um, I think, yeah, that sounds great, I was gonna just like hone in on one on one question or two, um we could provide everything. Um, I've already talked to my neighbor about that little wall that was on uh Mr. Simmons' report, um. Which is a remnant of an old two-foot-high existing stone wall that was there forever, so we're gonna grade it out. And fit that into the existing wall, I have a cordial relationship with um Muriel next door and um we're just gonna try to preserve it. As best we can and make sure um that's not an issue, we'll work it out. Um the other thing about the um utilities in respect to the sewer documentation. Um, we have had it inspected independently and it has been brought up to code completely based on that in independent inspection. The every um document that we submitted with our application is all the documentation on the current um. Uh available at the county's Department of Health website. So would you be looking for an additional inspection, a written letter to confirm that it is in conformance with the uh code and bedroom sizes?
Mr. Simmons, you have a question with that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, again referring to the May fifth, twenty twenty-two report I did. Basically, we'd be looking for a letter from the county health department that they're in agreement. And agree that it is brought up for a three-bedroom septic system size, just confirmation from them. And as Mr. Keens just mentioned, that helps protect you for the future as well.
Great, okay, and we're confident, we've already done our due diligence, but um our friend, um my engineer at Dexter Walker, Kevin, um will uh will be able to reach out and get that letter without a problem. For you. Um so uh the details you require, no problem with that, we'll, I could provide the generator pad detail, it's gonna be um just like, just to give you the background information. Uh the maximum would be a twenty KV uh kilowatt um. Uh standby generator, gas-powered, we bring in the line from Elizabeth Town. Um they're already, we've already coordinated with them on some extent. Uh my hope is this is actually gonna be um a very sustainable and energy-efficient house, we're gonna build a, it's gonna be an all-electric system. Um, I'm not sure how this board feels about solar, um but our intention is to explore that for day two. Um depending on our budget, so our hope is actually not even to really need the generator and there's a possibility that it could be downsized further from what we have. However, we wanna ask for it just in case um we can afford that solar option as we move forward. Um with our electrical system design of the house. Um and all that we would submit to you guys as needed throughout the building process.
I think the ordinance goes up to forty now, so you're well within the range.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll need, it's a small house, we're under, we're three bedrooms, under two thousand sque- uh two square feet, so um that twenty kilowatt will do just fine.
Uh Mr. Simmons, do you have any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, again referring back to my May fifth, twenty twenty-two report. The only other item I just wanna bring up, just so the board's aware, one of the reasons and ways they were able to bring down their impervious coverage. Was the proposed use of some pervious pavers in portions of their driveway. Uh I just wanna point out that that is one of the best management practices in the DEP manual that's accepted. Uh however, along with that being one of the accepted practices, goes maintenance responsibilities. As far as keeping that clean, uh vacuuming and what have you to make sure the porosity of the pavers and the joints in between still functions. So one of the things I really strongly recommend is that the applicant have his engineer prepare the maintenance plan for that. And it be recorded in the chain of title for their property, so that even though uh. Mr. and Mrs. uh Martino understand what's going on. So many owners down the road, we don't want them to dig up that in the future when the driveway needs replacement. And just put regular asphalt because it'll defeat the purpose of why they're proposing that in the first place. And I think he's in agreement with that.
I I am in agreement with that, um if you'd like, I could, I could pull up the drawing and show you guys specifically the area. Um what we'll do is we'll pull up um the performance specification from a system, not just a paver, the entire system and body of um substrate below it. Um and then that specification will come with all the maintenance requirements. Um so we will uh put that on file as you ask for, as well as submit it with our construction documentation.
Good, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board if anybody has any questions, Diana, would you please run down the list for me, please?
Hmm, Mr. Laurie?
Still one, uh Glenn, you have the um director of utilities, Phil's comments on the um. Two points he made about. The water service.
I do. I do.
So I don't know if the applicant has that or can respond to it or.
Did you get a copy of that, Matt?
Yes, yes, I do, so I have the comments from the uh um from the um water service. And uh I've actually already taken the house offline this winter, so the water service, the water company's been contacted. And uh we turned off the water, um so we'll continue to work with them as um as the utility as we move forward.
Okay, so that was number one, and then you contacted him on number two, so you did everything that they said in the four twenty-seven twenty-two report, is that right, Matt?
Yeah, it was done in January, or actually maybe November.
The way you're going, I I would say, wow, what a surprise.
Thanks.
Can you get your answer?
That's all, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Joseph Chek?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Sylvester?
No questions.
Mr. LaRufa?
No questions.
Mr. Leondi?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finkelby?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pitzer?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and Chairman Parker?
No questions, I'm gonna close it to the board and open it up to the public. Mr. Dempsey, is there anybody in the public that wishes to be heard in this matter?
Uh, yes, uh, Dr. Parker, there's two individuals. Uh, the first is Debbie Clark and the second is Rick Finkel, I will uh allow uh Debbie Clark to speak now.
Okay.
She can unmute her microphone.
Hi.
Ms. Clark, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, but I don't see you, do you have a video capability?
Yeah, I do, I do, I.
You don't have to put it on if you don't want.
No, it's okay, I can, hold on, and let me find where I do that, hold on.
Actually, um, uh, Dr. Parker, she has not been let in as a panelist, so she does not have the ability to turn her video on.
Okay.
If you would like, I will make her a panelist and.
Nah, that's fine, it's fine.
That's okay, it is, Debbie, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in respect to this matter?
I do.
Please give your name and address to the secretary.
Debbie Clark, three Oakwood Trail, Sparta, New Jersey.
How can we help you, Ms. Clark?
We are, our house is directly across the street from this proposed uh building and we are on a downslope from their lot. So we have a little bit of concerns about the runoff from that downslope down our driveway towards the lake. And we're wondering. What's gonna be done to prevent that? And also, we'd love to see the plans.
Uh, the plans are are posted and I'd happily uh show them to to you guys if you if you like to go through it. Um and maybe it's kind of pertinent to do that since we have some um some public who'd like to speak.
Dr. Parker, the plans have been on file and you can do what you want, but all this stuff has been on file, everybody was on notice, so.
Uh, let me just ask him, uh, Mr. Martino, uh. Have you addressed this this problem?
The drainage problem, um we are unaware of any drainage problem at the moment. Um our engineering has yielded that, you know, the the drainage on-site has been kept on-site, we're not adding any more roof line, we're actually decreasing. Our coverage, um our pervious coverage, so that'll help drainage. Um we're actually gonna have and improve our drainage practices because currently there really is none and. And our goal will be to funnel it towards the storm drain that is on the corner right beside the hydrant. So water that's flowing across the street is really not something I could speak to, we can't speak to um the way the street moves the water. Um so any water that comes down my driveway would, um I I should share my screen here so I could actually relate, if you don't mind, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Yeah, because I'm, I could speak directly to the drawings and and that will will make things a lot more simple. Um for Ms. Clark, and Ms. Clark, uh I look forward to meeting you personally, um. Yeah, because I'm, I could speak directly to the drawings and, and that will, will make things a lot more simple, um, for Miss Clark, and Miss Clark, uh, I look forward to meeting you personally, um, I saw that you may have requested, um, uh, uh, an email, uh, access to my drawings that I, that maybe you were shared with one of our, our other neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I'd happily share them with you, uh, I just, I know we haven't met formally, so, um, I look forward to, to getting to know you a little bit better, so first off, let me, let me just give you the background, um, to hopefully put you at ease, our, my goal is, is to make this neighborhood better, um, we're not, we're not trying to disrupt the view, um, and, in fact, let me go to my existing survey, if, uh, I'm gonna zoom in here, what I have here is the overlay in red of the new, of the proposed building, uh, over the existing, um, and I'm gonna draw here a little bit, so, the existing deck is right here, that's what you see, so, for everybody else in the room, uh, Miss Clark's house is over here, which would look at my house like this, um, with that poorly drawn arrow. So, um, what you could see, my, the building, it does move forward slightly in this area, um, that is actually the only area we have to expand, because we are moving it, um, further away from the property line, as you could see in these areas, um, so we're making things a lot better for our side neighbors, but we're still not moving any further than where the existing deck was, aside from squaring the corner. So, the new house first does not approach anywhere closer to your property, the other thing I want you to note is the, the drainage, so all the drainage is flowing down to the corner in this way, um, the slope is not gonna change and it's, um, it does flatten out as we get to the bottom, so, uh, our intention is to do, is to use some landscaping, but if there's an issue with anything coming over these, these curbs here, I mean, that's, that's an issue for the street, because the street's job is really to take that water right into the storm drain here. So, anything that comes down my driveway really just works its way, should be working its way right into that storm drain and not across the street in any way.
Well, of course, that's what we're all hoping, yes, but, you know, it, because of the fact that, I mean, I'm not worried about my view, my view is, you know, not, any, you don't affect that in any way.
No, you're, you're in front of us, right?
But I'm, I, but we, we have had issues with, you know, runoff from the higher elevations over there in our yard.
Construction runoff, are you referring to just debris from the unkept yard that was probably unkept by the previous owner, um, I'm not sure what you're referring to by runoff. This, by the way, in the construction detail, what you see here is the silt fence and the construction barrier that'll be erected around the property and dash lines, so when we are in construction, aside from these areas here where we have to tap into the utilities over on the side, we will completely encircle the yard with a silt fence that will stop any construction debris or erosion from moving off the site, um, and if anything gets disrupted in that, um, during construction, we would fix it immediately. And that's about as much as I could speak to erosion.
Hi, hi, I'm, I'm sorry, I had to walk away, because, oh, we're down in Florida at our Florida home and a bobcat just walked behind my lanai, so I got a little distracted there, but, um, yeah, as long as, you know, I, I'm, we're worried about post-construction, we're not worried about anything you're doing or, you know.
Post, post-construction, so, so, um, the grading is not, is, is very, is changing very little, in fact, we're gonna make the slope a little more gentle, the exception of what's going towards the driveway here, so any of the water, by the way, that's coming off our house, the new water, all our gutters are gonna point to around the house and it's gonna flow this way and our gutters are gonna point to this paved area. This was the paved area that we were just talking about with Mister Simmons, where it's a pervious driveway, so our gutter flow, so anything that's coming off our roof is gonna be directed to this zone, um, and, and be captured in that area, anything that's, that's in the lawn or the grass area over here, that's gonna, unfortunately, it's, it goes downhill and that's kinda what water does.
Yes, it does, as well we know, yeah.
Then the street, you know, sewer has to take over, um, in that situation, so.
What, I'm just curious, what is the impervious, uh, coverage on this, on this?
So, the impervious is actually current, the existing impervious is over, um, but it's at twenty-six percent, the allowable is twenty-five percent, and we're bringing it into, uh, at twenty-four point six, just under.
Oh, that's great, good.
So, we're decreasing our pervious and, and just, I know this is not important for you, but I, I, just so you know, I'm thinking about our, our, our neighbors is, um, you know, I know you, you, you're, you're friends with Muriel, I was just talking to her on, on Monday and, um, Muriel's view to the lake goes straight like this, and if you notice, I know it's not much, her front porch sits right over here, I'm cutting my house back four feet, so she actually gets four feet of lake view back, um, just like I'm actually pulling my house away from the next-door neighbor, because there's a lot of encroachment here, so there's not much I could really do as you're so far across the street, but if I could make the neighborhood a little more beautiful for you, that would be my goal as well.
You, you don't plan on having like a twelve-piece bandout on your deck every night, right?
No, it's my wife and I, we don't have any kids, we have two girls, and I hope to have you over for dinner once the house is.
Oh, that'd be great, you, you know what, listen, I, that, you, you are gonna have a beautiful lake view, as well you know.
Yeah, well, you, you have the same one, so.
Yeah, I mean, yours is like gonna be right through the open spots.
Miss Clark, has he answered your question?
Okay, sorry, guys, I apologize.
Miss Clark, has he answered your question?
Yes, he has, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, and I'll go back to.
Is there anybody else, Mister Dempsey, that, you said there was one other person?
Uh, yes, there is one other, other individual who had their hand raised, but it looks like they've, uh, lowered their hand.
Okay. I'll wait thirty seconds to see if they change. Should get an egg timer. Okay, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the board. Does any of the board members have any other questions for this applicant? Or Mister Simmons, do you have any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any board members have any other questions, just raise your hand or unmute and. Okay, uh, then the chair will accept the motion.
Mister Chairman, this is Ken Laurie, make the motion, have our board attorney prepare resolution, proving application, eleven dash twenty-two, block four oh three oh, lot fourteen, Matthew and Alexandra Martino. Reconstructed dwelling, garage. Minimum lot area, variance four thousand six hundred sixty-four square feet. With the following conditions. Pervious pavers maintenance plan. Be prepared in accordance with the NJDEP best practices and recorded in the chain of title. Also, the capacity of the existing septic system be confirmed with the county. Health department. And also, and as build plan, be prepared upon completion of the project, according to all plans and testimony submitted.
Ken, would you like to put, uh, an acceptance of all of things Dave Simmons?
Oh, sure, acceptance of our board engineer Dave Simmons' report.
Is there a second?
A second, John Finkelde.
Any discussion? Diana, would you call the roll, please?
Mister Laurie?
Yes.
Mister Joseph Check?
Yes.
Mister Sylvester?
Yes.
Mister LaRouba?
Yes.
Mister Leonie?
Yes.
Mister Finkelde?
Yes.
And Chairman Parker?
Yes. Mister Marine, Marino, you've been here now, you've listened to a couple of things, would you like to waive your rights to a written resolution?
Yes, I will.
Okay, you realize you'll get one eventually, but you, this way you can start the process tomorrow or the next day, okay?
That sounds great.
I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I second Mister Chairman, Ken Laurie.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody else wanna say aye, or you're gonna just ignore me?
Apparently, the applicant has somebody that voted for it too, I think.
I agree. Thank God.
Uh, Richie, you, did you say yes?
Yes, I said yes.
Okay, are there any, all the mics say yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll go call the roll if it's too hard to do a a vote.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, it looks like it's passed, Matthew, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all the board members for their participation tonight.
Great job, Mister Parker.
I tell you, we, uh, we really moved through a lot of things tonight.
Yes, we did.
The Keens, you missed a lot of fun.
Yeah, we kicked out of a lot of places.
Dave, I wanna thanks, thank you again for your help.
You're very welcome, sir.
Okay, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Okay, we won't have to go through that, good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good evening, everyone.